Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Monday, June the 8th, and this is the Cabarrus County Board of Education Business Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. First off, we'll be doing the presentation of colors with the combined unit of the Air Force JROTC Cadets. We will also have the National Anthem. Will be presented by our Cox Mill High School Chorus, under the direction of Ms. Jennifer Cook. And the Pledge of Allegiance will be presented to us by Dr. Robert Kirk. So if you'll join us as our young men and women begin to present the colors.
Pole. Lev. Pace. Reason.
Oh, say can you see? By the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose brush stripes and bright stars through the perilous night? For the rough hearts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gary. Colors. Post. Brian. Pace. Hold. Arch.
The presentations of the colors was the combined unit of the Air Force JROTC Cadets. It was Central Cabarrus' 2nd Lieutenant Martin Ramirez, JM Robinson, Cadet Master Sergeant Joseph Monahan, the Central Cabarrus Airmen 1st Class Eddie Savion, and Mount Pleasant Cadet Major Matt Cavaness. And the JROTC Cadets are instructed by Central Cabarrus High School Chief Master Sergeant Terry McCabe and Lieutenant Colonel Nelson English, Mount Pleasant High School Chief Master Sergeant Kevin McLaughlin, and Lieutenant Colonel Malcolm Snell. Northwest Cabarrus High was Senior Master Sergeant Corinne Smith and Lieutenant Colonel Calvin Martin, and JM Robinson High School Master Sergeant Wayne Outrum and Lieutenant Colonel Scott Rose. Our National Anthem that I noted earlier was sung by the Cox Mill High School Chorus, and what a great chorus, excuse me, what a great acapella they presented, and our Pledge of Allegiance by Dr. Kirk. Board members, we now are at the point where we will adopt our agenda. I need a motion to adopt our agenda as written. David Harrison made the motion. Rob Walter seconded that. All in favor of adopting the agenda as written, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries 7-0. We'll now go into our recognitions. We'll begin with the Hillbush Teacher of the Month, Dr. Chris Lauder, Ms. Ronnie Boone, and Ms. Glenda Jones. Y'all will come to the podium, please.
Tim Vaughn will not be with us tonight, so Dr. Lauder and Ronnie Boone will be making the presentations on behalf of Mr. Vaughn. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. Tonight, we will recognize our final Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for the 2014-15 school year. Sorry that Mr. Vaughn's not able to be with us tonight, but we do want to thank him and Hillbush Ford for their continued commitment to the Cabarrus County Schools and to helping us honor a terrific teacher each month. The Cabarrus County Schools Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for June is Christina Wolfram. Ms. Wolfram, would you, your family, and any members of your school's administrative team, please come forward? Christina Wolfram is a health physical education teacher at CC Griffin Middle School. She also is the school's athletic trainer. She was nominated for this month's award by a student who wrote, "Ms. Wolfram is the best teacher ever!" Exclamation point. She is like a mom to me. She cares about all of her students and wants everyone to succeed. She is our athletic trainer, so she always stays after school helping with sports teams. I don't think she ever gets time for herself, and that is sad, because she really deserves time to relax. Notice how they love you being there, but they still acknowledge this part that you need time, right? Whenever I have questions, she has answers. And whenever I just need someone to talk to, she is there for me. She is the best teacher and role model I could hope for. Ms. Wolfram, on behalf of Cabarrus County Schools, thank you for being such a wonderful role model to your students. Please allow Dr. Lauder to present you, and it looks like he's already done that with your awards there. And we're going to allow a few pictures, and we want you to go through so the boards can congratulate you.
Lisa Conger will come to the podium, and she will be presenting the state champion robotics team, their awards, our recognition.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. This is fun. I like doing this. Tonight, I get to recognize the JM Robinson High School VEX robotics team, and I'd like to call out their names. If they're here, if they'd please come up. But I'd like to start first with the two men who worked tirelessly with these students. They spend hours that you would spend with a sports team. Kids practice every day, they work throughout the summer to get ready for all of these competitions that they go to. So I'd like to introduce Mr. Dave Parisi and Mr. Daniel Peck. Students, I'm going to call your names one at a time, so if you'll please come to the front. Taylor Coffey, Jared Conine, Andy England, Sean Griffith, Andrew Krug, Brandon Lacourse, Marcus Lowry, Anthony Magliano, Omar Menefee, Kyle Moran, Maggie Munt, Evan Murphy, Dustin Ordones, Veer Patel, Chase Porter, Brandon Rector, Matthew White, Erin Tesh, and Jason Ellisor. If you'll please give them a round of applause. And now I'd like to tell you just a little bit about them. The JM Robinson High School Competitive VEX Robotics Team, for the second consecutive year, swept the North Carolina VEX State Championships. They competed against 33 other North Carolina robotics programs. The Bulldogs dominated the field throughout the event. This title qualified the team to compete at the VEX World Championships in Louisville, Kentucky, where they entered their machines to compete against 448 other high school teams from 29 different nations. The Robinson program has been instrumental in building the VEX competitive platform throughout North Carolina. Each year, and this is not in what they sent me to talk about them, but each year, they sponsor two events, and students from North Carolina and South Carolina come to compete. And inevitably, when I ask kids ages 11 through 16, "Who do you look to when you want to compete? Who do you want to be like one day?" And they always say, "Those Bulldogs." And we know who it is. It's our very own Robinson team. JM Robinson will be hosting a summer camp for two weeks in June, where students from ages 8 to 15 will experience the excitement of designing buildings, problem solving, and competing each other with machines they built. There are currently 108 local and regional students enrolled in the summer camp, and I think that number's been increasing every day. So I'm very proud to present this group to you, and students, and advisors, if you'll please be recognized by the board.
Donna Smith is at the podium, and she is going to do the East Carolina University Scholar.
Thank you. I have a special recognition tonight of a student who is not in attendance, but we still want to salute, because he was recently recognized by Early College High, and we want to be able to do that same honor tonight. The student is Bryce Bowery, who is officially now a graduate of our Early College High School and accepted into the East Carolina Scholars Program. This is actually the most prestigious undergraduate award offered at East Carolina, and the four-year merit scholarship will recognize outstanding academic performance, commitment to community engagement, and strong leadership skills. I'd like to tell you that Bryce's area of study will be biology, and he plans to become a physician, because he's already seen the profession up close by volunteering and shadowing a doctor in our community free health clinic. He's also a founder of CHESS, which is the Cooperative Health Engagement between seniors and students. Unique title, isn't it? And the organization here aims to improve the mental health of senior citizens living in retirement homes by pairing them with high school students to play board games and cards with them. So tonight, in his absence, we do salute Bryce Bowery for his achievement. And now I'd like to take, excuse me, I'm just jumping right in.
Well, go ahead. She's going to present the Prudential Spirit of Community Award.
Can you tell I'm very excited?
Yes.
I'd like to ask that Davis Dawson and Samuel Park and the administrators from their schools to come forward, please. Let me share some details. The Prudential Spirit of Community Awards Program is the United States' largest youth recognition program for voluntary community service. The program was actually created in 1995 by Prudential Financial in partnership with the National Association of Secondary School Principals, just to honor middle and high school students for outstanding service to others. And since the beginning of this program in 1995, there have been 100,000 students recognized at the local, state, and national levels. The program applauds young people who are already making a positive difference in their towns and neighborhoods, and to inspire others to begin thinking about how you can contribute back to your communities. We're very fortunate in Cabarrus County tonight to have actually the two state finalists from North Carolina. Guess how many state finalists there were from North Carolina? Two. And it's actually one of our middle school and high school students. Let's begin with Samuel. In fact, Samuel has shared with me his gold certificate, and this is quite an accomplishment. Let me tell you what Samuel has done. Here it is. Samuel is operating a video transfer service to raise funds for orphans in Kenya and Uganda, and he actually delivers ebook libraries to orphanages, schools, and youth centers in these countries. Can you imagine that? In response to that, he has earned $1,000, an engraved medallion, and he actually went to Washington DC in May to be recognized. We are very, very proud of Samuel. Who I should add, as I see Mr. Aldridge looking at me, is a 7th grader at Harris Road Middle School. Let me take a moment and salute also Davis Dawson, who is an 11th grader at JM Robinson High School. Davis raised more than $43,000 and led more than 200 volunteers in building a new house for a single mother and her four children through the Habitat for Humanity, all with his efforts, and we salute him too in his absence. This is exciting, because as we teach academics, we also teach service hearts, and I think we've got the perfect one right in front of us with his medallion on. Let's give you the opportunity to shake the board member's hands. Thank you so much.
Brian Tyson here at the podium, and he's going to present the North Carolina High School Athletic Association Commissioners Cup.
I'd like to call forward the Mount Pleasant High School Awesome Club members who are in attendance tonight, as well as with their advisor.
They'll come forward.
For you guys that don't know what the Awesome Club stands for, that stands for athletes who share unselfish moments. And these guys are being recognized for receiving the 2014-15 prestigious North Carolina High School Athletic Association's Commissioners Cup. This award recognizes groups that perform outstanding community service projects. These folks attended the May meeting of the North Carolina High School Athletic Association, where they received their trophy in front of everybody in the state, and also received $1,000 stipend. Mount Pleasant High School's Awesome Club submitted a video that some of you have probably seen on our website, highlighting their king-of-the-court volleyball tournament, which funds raised goes towards the fight against breast cancer in our community. This tournament started by Mount Pleasant High School in 2008, and has grown bigger and bigger each year as every one of our high schools in the county are involved with this effort. This year, the tournament set a goal of raising $15,000, and they actually ended up raising $18,000 collectively to support the local breast cancer charities. The Mount Pleasant High School Awesome Club has also made sizable donations to the Vicki S. Honeycutt Foundation and to causes important to Awesome Club community member Lori Shaver Love, who is fighting her own battle against breast cancer right now. In attendance tonight, we have advisor Michael Landers, and Mike needs to be applauded for his great efforts in this cause of starting this great effort for breast cancer awareness. With him tonight, he has student leaders Madison Herring, Mariah Morrow, Kalen Sanderson, Matthew McDonald, and Lex Lepock. And like I said, Lori Shaver Love was planning on attending also, but didn't feel quite up to it tonight, so our thoughts and prayers are with her in her battle against this. So please welcome these folks and congratulate them for their outstanding efforts in receiving the North Carolina High School Athletic Association's Commissioners Cup. Congratulations, guys.
Sharon Marlin will be presenting the North Carolina Show Choir Champions.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, it's my pleasure this evening to introduce the Harris Road Middle School Show Choir, who just won the state championship in their very first year. I'll call the names of the students. Please come forward when I call your name. Serena Brantley, Megan Conley, Ava Dill, Kristen Dunning, Jordan Gervais, Josh Hansen, Delisa Hardnick, Joy Jackson, Crystal Lucayo, Maddie McLanmore, Kyra McBright, Kristy Montez, Gianna Moss, Kelsey Mossheart, Kayla Pearson, Kinsley Pearson, Hannah Poole, Noemi Rabenowitz, Ally Reed, Isaiah Ropa, Anna Rose, Jessica Schenk, Jaylen Singletary, Kaylee Smith, Grace Stevens, Shirley Toledo, Emma Workman, Tristan Jenkins, and Zion Zolakoffer. Ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to congratulate you on your very first year being named the state champion Middle School Show Choir. They call themselves New Beginnings, and in addition to taking home the state championship, they also won Best Female Vocalist, 7th grader Anna Rose, wave your hand if you're here. Correction, 8th grader. Sorry. Although they'd probably like to keep you another year at Harris Road. Best New Show Choir, Best Vocals, and Best Choreography. They are directed by Jody K. Skeen. If Jody's here, please come up, and choreographed by Elena Bogan. Congratulations once again. If you will move in this manner and shake hands with the board members, they will all congratulate you.
Dial from Odell School. He's our SRO in attendance tonight. I wish y'all would just give him a round of applause for protecting our students. All right, next on our agenda is the Board Intern Recognition, and Ms. Carolyn Carpenter, if you'll come down to the podium.
I'm fine looking at you guys from this point of view. Two years ago, I received an email from a student from Mount Pleasant High School asking to become my intern. The Board of Education had never had an intern program before, so I had to check with the attorney, and the Board, to make this happen, after all the details were worked out, I contacted this student and invited him to come to our board meeting. From that moment, I met, from the first moment I met Hunter Moore, I was impressed. I knew he was not your average student. He was very well-spoken, very polite, and very well-dressed, bow tie and all. I know that Mr. Shoemaker is going to miss comparing bow ties with Hunter. And at this time, if I could have Hunter Moore and his parents and family, please come up to the front, if you could come on up. As I mentioned, from that day on, Hunter attended our board meetings, also meetings that I've served as a liaison to, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, Policy Council, the budget meetings, and then even sat in on the architectural selection committee. Hunter has been an outstanding intern. He is one of the most energetic, hard-working young men I think I've ever known. And as one board member said, "He has really set the bar high for any other interns." Here are a few of Hunter's accomplishments. He was a delegate to the North Carolina Youth Legislative Assembly, Cabarrus County Student Representative on the Juvenile Justice Crime Prevention Council. He sits on the Mount Pleasant School Improvement Team. He was an Eagle Scout, or is an Eagle Scout, commander for the Mount Pleasant Junior ROTC, holding the rank of Lieutenant Colonel, Mount Pleasant Commissioner on Cabarrus County Youth Commission, and he will graduate cum laude, and he's a North Carolina Scholar. He won the Senior Superlative for most leadership. He won the Peggy Hayward Scholarship. Also, the Juvenile Justice Crime Prevention Council has voted to make Hunter an at-large member, and this is the first time I know of, and I've been serving on Juvenile Justice Crime Prevention Council for a long time, that we have made one of our student representatives a permanent at-large member. So that's a real accomplishment. And on his own time, now, we'll make sure people realize, this was on his own time, not as one of our interns. Council, the budget meetings, and then even sat in on the Architectural Selection Committee. Hunter has been an outstanding intern. He is one of the most energetic, hardworking young men I think I've ever known. And as one board member said, he has really set the bar high for any other interns. Here are a few of Hunter's accomplishments. He was a delegate to the North Carolina Youth Legislative Assembly, Cabarrus County Student Representative on the Juvenile Justice Crime Prevention Council. He sits on the Mount Pleasant School Improvement Team. He was an Eagle Scout, or is an Eagle Scout, commander for the Mount Pleasant Junior ROTC, holding the rank of Lieutenant Colonel, Mount Pleasant Commissioner on Cabarrus County Youth Commission, and he will graduate cum laude, and he's a North Carolina Scholar. He won the Senior Superlative for most leadership. He won the Peggy Hayward Scholarship. Also, the Juvenile Justice Crime Prevention Council has voted to make Hunter an At-Large Member, and this is the first time I know of, and I've been serving on Juvenile Justice Crime Prevention Council for a long time, that we have made one of our student representatives a permanent At-Large Member, so that's a real accomplishment. And on his own time, now, we'll make sure people realize, this was on his own time, not as one of our interns. Last fall, Hunter helped out with federal, state, and local campaigns, and most of all the candidates that Hunter helped out, they won. And I don't think Hunter ever wants to see a message in a box again. Hunter will be attending Pfeiffer University this fall, but he has promised to come back and help the Policy Committee work out the details for the intern program, because he really believes in this program. Hunter, we wish you the very best in your future endeavors, and we would know that you will succeed in anything that you do, and I know your parents is very proud. Now, we don't have a whole lot, but all of us, the board members and some of the staff we chipped in, and we've got you about four hundred dollars in this nice little jar here. So that will help you out, and we've got you a couple cards that we signed here, and we've got a nice little plaque here, and it says Hunter Moore, Cabarrus County Board of Education Intern, in recognition and appreciation for your dedication and service to the Board of Education in Cabarrus County Schools, 2013, 2014, and 2014, 2015, we had you for two years, and we really appreciate it, June the 8th, 2015.
High School Athletic Association, Bob Deaton, Principal of the Year.
It's my honor to call forward Ms. Carla Black, Concord High School Principal, if she would come forward, and any family members that you have with you. Ms. Black has brought her daughter and her son with her tonight. And your mother and your sister and your niece, okay? Didn't mean to leave you guys out. But not only did the Awesome Club bring home an award at the annual meetings of the High School Athletic Association this past May, but Ms. Black was recognized as the 2014-15 North Carolina High School Athletic Association Principal of the Year for her efforts in promoting high school athletics. Ms. Black currently serves on the North Carolina High School Athletic Association Board of Directors and is the Chairman of the Policy Committee. So it's my honor to congratulate you on your efforts with the High School Athletic Association, and please join me in congratulating Ms. Black on this honor.
Carolina Chapter of the Council of Education Facility Planners International Planner Award.
Would David Burnett and members of his family please come to the front? Just you, you're enough. David Burnett has focused most of his energies on the development, design, construction, and operations of educational facilities. He has twenty years of experience in the public sector and eight years in the private sector. He has managed well over one billion dollars' worth of K-12 capital projects, to include forty-four new schools plus many other additions, renovations, and school improvement projects. Dave became an REFP, Recognized Educational Facilities Planner, in 2007, and a Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design Accredited Professional, with a concentration in building, design, and construction in 2009. This year, Dave was named the 2015 Planner of the Year by the North Carolina Chapter of the Council of the Educational Facility Planners International on April 21st, at the Council's Regional Conference in Asheville, North Carolina. This award honors his dedication, his perseverance, in guiding the design and construction of high-quality, sustainable educational facilities for the district. He was selected by the CEFPI NC Board Members from an initial field of six finalists. His wealth of knowledge, experience, leadership, and creativity in the area of 21st-century school design were the main reasons he was selected for this prestigious award. Please join me in congratulating Dave Burnett, and we're extremely fortunate to have you as part of our team. Thank you.
All right, if Ms. Nicole Sandor will come forward, we're talking about the Gifted Local Endorsement.
Ms. Sandor cannot be here this evening. I'm Chris Harland. I was part of the team that put the Glee team together. Mr. Chairman and Board Members, we have a really special award, some awards to give out this evening. This will be a first for Cabarrus County. This year, the Cabarrus County Schools Gifted Education Department rolled out the first Gifted Local Endorsement Course for teachers. The program is fondly referred to as Glee, G-L-E-E. The Glee course promotes basic understanding of the characteristics and social-emotional needs of gifted students, and reviews instructional strategies for advanced learners. This year, we had sixteen fantastic teachers from elementary and middle schools across the county achieve this endorsement. You can find a complete list of teachers with the Gifted Endorsement on the Cabarrus County Gifted Education webpage. We look forward to expanding our list of endorsed teachers in the coming years. This is exciting news for gifted learners across Cabarrus County. And at this time, I would like to have them come up to receive their certificates. So, as I call your name, and I'm going to hopefully not mispronounce their names. From A.T. Allen, Cassandra Cowick. From Bethel Elementary, Deborah Arnold. From Beverly Hills Elementary, Shelby Davis. From Boger Elementary, Kimberly Van Sprange. From Coltron Webb STEM, Engel Baran. From Cox Mill Elementary, Erica Stevenson. From Harrisburg Elementary, Sarah Cole. From Hickory Ridge Middle, April Winkler. From Harris Road Middle, Kim Murfit. From Mount Pleasant Elementary, Kelly Spears. From Patriot STEM Elementary, Megan Charlton. From Pitt School Road Elementary, Kelly Cole. From Rocky River Elementary, Leanne Russey. From Royal Oaks Elementary, Lauren Saunders. From Weddington Hills Elementary, Karen Kelly. From WR Odell, Angie Campbell. And that is our list for this evening, so congratulations.
the North Carolina Council of Teachers of Mathematics, which is the NCCTM, and the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, the NCDPI, Outstanding Elementary Math Teacher.
All right, great. The importance of mathematics instruction in our schools cannot be overemphasized. To emphasize this reality, the North Carolina Council of Teachers of Mathematics, NCCTM, and the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction strive to recognize and reward elementary school teachers who exemplify mathematics teaching excellence by nurturing students' enthusiasm in mathematics. This recognition is for those teachers who succeed in motivating students to excel. We had several Cabarrus County Schools teachers nominated for this honor. As I call your name, please come forward with your administrator and family. Our first nominated teacher is Melissa Cockrell, fourth grade teacher at Weincoff Elementary School. If she would come forward, please. Ms. Cockrell consistently demonstrates excellence in her teaching. She is always willing to learn, and she is always willing to teach and guide colleagues to grow and develop as professionals. I respect her thoughts and opinions, because I have observed her balanced approach to problems of practice, as well as her focus on what's best for children. She has demonstrated a willingness to be flexible, and she consistently exhibits a genuinely high level of dedication to her students, the school, and her profession. Congratulations to Melissa Cockrell. In addition to Melissa, we'd like to invite Jennifer Pratt, from third grade teacher at Wolf Meadow Elementary School. If she would come forward with her administrator and family. One big photo for our nominees here. Mrs. Pratt is not only an outstanding mathematics teacher in her own classroom, but her high expectations and rigor of delivering effective instruction ripples into every third grade classroom on her team. She pushes her team to dissect standards by leading thorough and collaborative conversations prior to teaching each unit. She has been instrumental in creating rigorous assessment and using formative data to make decisions about how to proceed with diagnostic planning and implementation. Congratulations to Jennifer Pratt. And then we have Lori Westerholt, a fifth grade teacher and lead teacher at A.T. Allen Elementary School. If she would come forward with her administrator and family. Throughout the instructional time, Mrs. Westerholt is actively engaged with her students. She asks intentional questions to further students' learning, and will have students share as soon as she sees thinking and learning that will take students farther with their math. At the end of her lessons, Mrs. Westerholt reflects upon her teaching by looking at student exit tickets. She then reorganizes her plan for the following day, if necessary, to ensure that all students are able to master the concepts being taught. Congratulations to Lori Westerholt. And our last nominee was Wanda Barber, for second grade teacher at WR Odell Elementary School. If Wanda would come forward with her, family, and administrators. Ms. Barber is a master teacher in every sense of the word. She is a successful graduate of the first teacher leadership cohort from our school, having completed two continuous years of strenuous leadership classes and school-based projects. In addition, she serves as a second grade chair and co-chair of the Math Workshop School Improvement Plan Goal Team. Ms. Barber spends several days each summer analyzing school data with administrators and developing action steps to address strategies to increase student achievement in our school. Congratulations to Ms. Wanda Barber. And finally, our winner of the Elementary Mathematics Teacher of the Year in Cabarrus County goes to Amy Schu. Amy Schu is a fifth grade teacher at Beverly Hills Elementary School. If she would come forward with her administration and family. Mrs. Schu implements math workshop with high levels of fidelity and integrity. During her workshop blocks, she incorporates mental math activities, common tasks, guided math groups, technology, games, and cooperative learning groups daily, in order to challenge her students and differentiate instruction. Students are engaged in the eight mathematical practices consistently throughout her math blocks. The students in her classes utilize manipulatives, mental math strategies, model drawing, standard and non-standard algorithms and methods, verbal and non-verbal, and written communication methods to solve problems. With her guided math groups, Mrs. Schu provides intentional, data-driven instruction to scaffold or extend student learning. Students collaborate and effectively communicate their reasoning and thinking with each other and Mrs. Schu. They have learned how to challenge and question each other's reasoning in a collaborative group while solving problems. It is quite evident that Mrs. Schu has spent time teaching, modeling, and coaching her students to have effective partnerships. Mrs. Schu's students collect their own achievement data and set goals for themselves as mathematicians. Student self-assessment occurs on a daily basis in her classroom. The students take responsibility for their own learning. Mrs. Schu's students experience high levels of engagement during her lessons, make real-world connection to the content, and applications to their daily lives. I want to congratulate all of you for being fantastic math educators in Cabarrus County, and especially congratulations to Mrs. Schu. At this time, if you would do the loop-de-loop and shake hands with the board.
us with the Skills USA Masonry Expert Award.
And he is on his way to the front. And Mr. Louder, I know that you wanted to be a part of this, so I have the certificate.
Yep. I just want, when Ms. Conger and I started talking about this, I had the pleasure of working with Mr. Hartzell at Central Cabarrus for five or six years, and he did such a great job with students there and providing students an opportunity and really putting them to work. I mean, was commended by our local masonry group over and over again, so just somebody that I was really excited to, obviously with the experience I had. He's done a lot of things for a lot of students in Cabarrus County, and it's a great thing to see him be awarded this way.
Yeah, and we had talked, and that's why I wanted to make sure that he got to say something, Dr. Louder worked with Mr. Hartzell at Central Cabarrus High School. Tonight, we're recognizing a very special teacher. We all know that Cabarrus County School has a long history of training outstanding masons. If you go to regional or national competition or state competition, you know the county to beat is Cabarrus County. And when I came here seven years ago, I knew that coming from another district, and I was so proud to be a part of the group that you had to beat to win. Students participate in Skills USA at every level, and these same students go on to successful careers in masonry and to universities across the state to major in engineering and construction management. And behind each of these students, there's a committed teacher. This year, one of our very own masonry teachers has been selected and appointed as the Masonry Expert for the United States World Skills Team by the National Skills USA Headquarters in Leesburg, Virginia. Mr. Todd Hartzell, Masonry Mr. Todd Hartzell, masonry teacher at Central Cabarrus High School, will train the Skills USA Masonry Representative for the 2015 World Skills Competition, which will be held in Brazil this coming August. Todd, we're very proud of you, and we wish you the very best as you prepare for the national competition.
I would like to say one thing if I could, that I'm not a big talker, and I've talked to several of my colleagues. I'm a private person, but there's no bigger honor than to actually get this challenge that's going to be placed before me. I'm actually going to be the expert for the near future for training the national champions for, not just North Carolina, but actually represented from North Carolina competing this year, for the United States, but this is for the future. And there's no bigger honor than receiving this challenge or honor of actually being the instructor for the United States. And I appreciate Cabarrus County Schools giving this opportunity for me to train good kids. We do have good kids, and just like our motto or slogan for Cabarrus County Schools, it's a clear choice, Cabarrus County Schools is the place to be, but I do appreciate it.
Ms. Linda Jones is at the podium, and she's going to be presenting the Board of Education Teacher Liaison for 2014-2015. Ms. Han, if you'd come to the podium.
All right, I'm going to ask Ms. Han to come down and join me here. And while she's coming, you all know that she served as the Board Liaison for this 2014-15 school year. Allison Han comes from a family of educators, both parents as well as sisters, grandparents, aunts, and uncles are involved in education. She earned a degree in secondary education in math at Clemson University. So I'm not going to say go Tigers, but I will say go Gamecocks. Allison accepted a teaching position at Central Cabarrus High School in 2009, and she admits she experienced a wide range of teaching opportunities, including upper-level Algebra II, Advanced Functions and Modeling, and Pre-Calculus courses. In the fall of 2012, Ms. Lynn Reimer asked Allison to help begin planning the STEM Magnet Program at Central Cabarrus High School, and she has been involved in the STEM program since that time. Through the Miriam and Robert Hayes Charitable Trust, Allison will be traveling to Singapore from July the 10th through the 21st along with 40 educators from throughout North Carolina with the Center for International Understanding. Laura Bryson, the 2014-15 Teacher of the Year from Northwest Cabarrus High School, will also be making this trip. The trip to India will focus on STEM education and the Singapore math approach to teaching. Unfortunately, for Cabarrus County Schools, Allison will be leaving us in June, not just as the Board Liaison, but leaving us as a classroom teacher. She has accepted a two-year position as a teacher in residence at the University of North Carolina at Charlotte. She will primarily be working with pre-service teachers in their math content courses, teaching four courses during the upcoming fall semester. She will also work with teachers during their field experiences and with professors on math education research. Allison, on behalf of the Board of Education, thank you for your service to the students of Cabarrus County. While your presence will be missed in the classroom... I'll get emotional. She and I had a heart-to-heart when she made this decision, and it was an emotional heart-to-heart. So while your presence will be missed in the classroom, we know that this new position will afford you the opportunity to expand your impact on education by growing master teachers. Please accept this small token of appreciation from me to you, okay?
Thank you. I was going to ask you to open it. Oh, no.
So we're going to thank her for her service, and she has a few comments to make here.
I just want to say thank you so much for allowing me to sit on the board for this past year and having this experience. I have learned a lot, and I've grown as an educator, and it's truly been an honor to represent the amazing, amazing teachers here in this county. I also just want to say how grateful I am for the six years that I've spent at Central and for the six years that I've spent in this great school system, and the many, many opportunities that have come with it. I love my job, and I love my students, I love the teachers that I work with, I love Central, I love everything about this place. So this decision was very hard for me, and I'll miss it a lot, but the good news is that I won't be very far, I'll be right up the road, and I'm looking forward to, hopefully, you know, continuing to work with Cabarrus County Schools in the future. So, thank you all very much.